Good evening. We'll call the August 18th Sebastian Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Let's all please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could we have a roll call for attendance?
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Dodd?
Here.
Mr. Kizabash?
Yes.
Ms. Kattonberg?
Here.
Mr. Huguen?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
And Mr. Reyes?
Here.
Thank you. In the form of announcements, Mr. McManus has been excused from tonight's meeting, and Mr. Huguen will be voting in his absence tonight. We have no minutes to approve. Sorry, let me back up a second. Announcements also, I'm going to call on Marissa to make a special introduction at this point. Our...
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Susan Mann. She is our recording consultant, and she will be helping with recording the meetings and transcribing the minutes, and basically doing what Dory has been doing as the recording secretary. So, we're very, very happy to have her aboard.
Thank you.
She's my new best friend.
Yeah.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
I guess that means we'll see some minutes at the next meeting. Is that correct? Now, don't overload us, okay? Small request there. As far as, well, the agenda items, approval of minutes, we have none for tonight. We have no public hearings, and as far as I know, there's no unfinished business. Is that correct?
Correct.
As far as the items on the agenda tonight, we have new business, and public input will be permitted on those two items. Under new business, we have two items of business, and I think in deference to our resident who has an accessory structure review, I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any objection if we change the agenda and move that up to allow the resident to make his presentation first and then go into the review of our capital improvement program. That could be a little bit longer, so I think if that's okay, we'll do that. Could we have a motion to do that, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, under new business, that we move item B in front of item A for consideration.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, Chairman, who made the second?
Yeah, I'm second. I did second.
Oh, Mr. Kizabash.
Nobody heard?
We know you're here. Okay, that brings us to the first item business on the accessory structure review for 837 Lansdowne Drive. And I would ask if, at this point, if there is any staff would basically review or introduce the motion, what is proposed here, and then we'll have the resident come forward.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Steinacker and Linda Souter have brought an application forward. They would like to build a 1,000-square-foot detached garage on the vacant lot next to a home that they own. It is going to be a custom-built CBS block home. Going through the staff report, there was a couple of things I did want to point out. I do want to clarify, on item F, on page two of that staff report, I have the house at approximately 16 feet high. That was from a scale that I did on some drawings, but we did pull the plans out again, and Mr. Steinacker did show me down on the bottom, there was actually a graph, and it had a mean height of the house at 17 feet from the architect. So, that is the extra foot there. This was one of those scenarios where the lot, of course, for the house, is raised up higher for the septic tank fill, and the lot next door is a little bit lower. So, either way, whether the house is at 16 or 17, based on the elevations, which I highlighted on the survey, you can see that visually the two buildings will be the same height. They have been very diligent on what they, rules and regulations, and I've met with them at least two or three times before they submitted the application. They're aware of the tree and the hedging requirements that they'll need to complete this, that we'll make sure is there by the time certificate of completion would be issued. It does not show on your survey, but they're aware of the 12 trees that they need and the 31 shrubs that they'll be planting on the outside of the concrete driveway that goes around that building. And we request that you make that a condition of approval, if that is the way you're going to vote. With that, this is a pretty straightforward one. It is definitely going to match the house with colors and building material, and staff recommends approval of the application with the condition that they meet the required landscaping and hedging requirements.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate your clarification on the height of the house and location on the lot. I noticed when I drove by that there is substantial difference there, and it's higher than... Okay, is Mr. Steinacker here to make comments on what he proposes to do?
I intend to build the garage.
Do you have any plans for, I noticed the drive or the parking pad all the way around, or the concrete pad all the way around it. Do you have any plans for outside storage there?
No, sir. What I intend to do is, it's a four-bay garage, and the reason why I put the concrete all the way around is I'll have access to all four bays without moving anything around. I'll be able to get a car out from the back, go around, and so forth. That's why I want so much of a driveway.
Okay. Is it wide enough for the, for a vehicle to get around the side?
Yes, sir. It's 15 foot on the sides, and it's 20 feet in the back.
Okay. And you're, you understand the requirements on matching the house with shingles and the color and so forth?
Yes, the only difference is the house does not have architectural shingles, and we would like to put architectural shingles of the same color on the garage. You know, it's a better shingle than what was on the house.
Oh, correct. It is. Heavier weight.
Yes, sir. Yes. But the colors will be the same, the roof pitch will be the same, the soffit will be the same width 12 inches, and it'll have gutters, same color as the house.
And there will be electric in there, because I do see carriage flights on the side of the fan.
Yes, sir. It'll have its own meter.
Oh, its own meter, okay.
Yes, not coming off the house. No, sir.
Perhaps at this point, let's ask if the commissioners have any questions of the applicant. Let's start over here.
No, no questions.
No? Okay. Mr. Reyes?
When you mentioned that it's going to have its own meter, are you intending to rent this space out?
No, sir. It's for my own use. I just want a large amp service in there. This way, I can put a lift in it, I can put an air compressor in it, and I need the service for all the accessories that are going to go into the building.
No further questions. Thank you.
When you say for personal, for your personal use, you, I assume, are indicating you're a hobbyist, and you're not going to be performing a business function there?
That's correct, ma'am. Yes. I plan on retiring next year, and I plan on buying some cars, but I didn't want to buy them because I have no place to put them yet.
Okay. But we're not going to be fixing other people's cars?
No, no, ma'am. No.
Okay. Thank you.
I do want to bring up another comment in reference to the height. I see this all the time, this problem happening. Shouldn't we be speaking about an elevation? Because if you look at elevation, when you're looking at heights, like you're saying, this structure is on a lot that's a little lower than the other lot. So, you can't really judge that, so we might want to look at revising this, this application to, to say height or elevation of the, the highest elevation of the...
Staff has read that, I mean, we haven't had this before. The code does say that it can't be higher than the house. We have taken what we believe to be the intent of the code was so that visually you didn't have the accessory structure higher than the house. And so, we have worked with, you know, some of the RV garages and things like that, where visually it wasn't higher. There is almost a foot and a half elevation difference. If you would like to see that changed in the code, we certainly can go through that process and add that in.
I've just, I've actually seen where you've had to survey the peak of the house, and it's, it's been a problem on other stuff that I've done before, so I was just looking at that. Other than that, I have no other questions.
That's a good point, too. It took me a while to do the math on that, when I, and I did find ultimately on the drawing for the garage, I did find some elevations on that, but it took a while to find it, and then I wasn't clear until Dory clarified it. So, I think it's a good point. We may want to consider that in the future. Any questions? Gentlemen?
No questions.
I have a question for the staff on the landscaping, foundation landscaping. Don't we have this requirement for commercial thing, foundation landscaping? Commercial is three bushes for 10 feet, and this is three bushes for nine feet, too stringent for the residential lot.
Now, this is, the landscaping is just for the larger structures, the structures that are over 750 square feet.
Okay.
And again, I think the intent of the code, when we changed this, was this was, these were going to be large buildings that almost looked like a small home, and that the landscaping would break up some of the immensity of those buildings. So, I believe that was, you know, why it was over 750. I don't know how they came up with, how we came up with the one plant for every three linear feet. But yes, it is similar to the landscaping in the, in the commercial district, the overlay.
I think we should look at this thing, because when somebody builds a single-family house, there's no requirement for bushes, it's only canopy trees.
Correct.
But this lot only five canopy tree requires, you know? So, we should look at that thing, because it's too stringent to the homeowners to put so many bushes. Again, in this situation, there's no foundation, it's all driveway all around.
Yeah, on this one, it is going to be with the concrete. Again, some of these buildings were 20 by 50 feet, and I think that was the intention, that on 50-foot wall, at least we could break it up with some bushes. Not that 24 inches high is going to break up the wall at that point, but when they grow.
All right, that's my concern.
Any other questions?
No.
No.
None? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Steinacker. Staff, could we have your final review and...
Staff recommends approval of the application for the 1,000-square-foot detached garage at 837 Lansdowne Drive, with the condition that the requirements for the foundation landscaping and the amount of trees for a double lot is met before certificate of completion is issued.
How many trees was that, Dory?
Pardon me?
How many trees was that? You had a number a minute ago.
We were working with them to find out what they actually had on the house lot. I believe there, there is a few trees on there. We've kind of been working with them on how many palms or citrus and how many canopy trees they would wood. So, we will get that. I believe they have three or four on the house. So, it is going to be at least six or seven trees that they will have to plant.
So, it needs a total of six or seven between the house and the new structure?
12 is the number of trees that they need on a double lot. We don't know what kind of credit they're getting for the trees that are on the house lot, and we'll work with them on that.
On the house, there's five oak trees from the original building of the house.
I remember there are quite a few. I, the aerial that's here doesn't show. Obviously, that was taken a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
So...
They're in the backyard. There's five of them.
Okay, so, we're, I guess, ready for a motion on this from one of the commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to approve accessory structure at 837 Lansdowne Drive as submitted, with the condition and the approval for the landscape, landscaping of the property.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any discussion before we vote? Would you call a roll, please, for a vote?
Mr. Huguen?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabash?
Yes.
Ms. Kattonberg?
Yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. You're all set to go.
Thank you, sir.
Just make sure you...
I'd like to mention, you have a lot less property to mow now. My father owned the house across the street. He just sold it. I've seen you mowing that lot with a push mower many, many times.
I like the exercise.
It hurts me to watch you, so...
Well, it's self-propelled.
Congratulations.
It's self-propelled. Thank you, sir.
Okay, now, that concludes the accessory structure review. We can now move to the review of capital improvement for the commission. And I see we have two distinguished guests here from city administration.
Yes.
I'm sorry, just for the record, we need to have your, your name.
My name is Ken Kilgore. I'm the administrative services director and chief financial officer for the city. With me tonight is Frank...
Frank. Our city engineer, he's volunteered to come tonight to give a presentation on the roadwork
that's planned for next year, and some of our road improvements, I know, are big on a lot of people's minds, and we want to make sure everyone understands what we're providing for. So, I've given you quite a bit of detail in your packets as far as the total financial plan, on how we're going to fund all these projects that we've got over the next six years, and in particular, the ones that are scheduled for next year. I'm just going to summarize in my presentation at a higher level and try to give you an overview, and I'd be happy to take further questions, or if you've got any concerns or suggestions for improvements, we would certainly like to hear about those. So, following along with my PowerPoint, as I said, we've got a lot of detail that's been given to you already, and I just want to give you highlights of the program tonight. Of course, from staff's point of view, you know, we look at the operational needs and financial capabilities of the city. The role, I think, of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to take that, that vision and that idea of where you want the city to go and what kind of capital improvements that might be desired, even though we can't do them at this point, perhaps, but we can start planning for it or see that there is a recognition of that need. We go through the budget process, and we rely a lot on our budget review advisory committee. Of course, they're looking also probably a little bit more short-term than you would, so we value, you know, any input, any input you can give us tonight. We do have the council public hearings on the budget scheduled at a special meeting on the, on September 19th, and a regular meeting of the council on September 28th. At that meeting, they set the proposed millage, or the final millage rate and the approval of the capital program, any changes to their financial policies, and the operating budget and millage. So, included in the capital improvement program for this coming year, starting October 1st, we've got $140,000 for audio, visual, and computer-type items, $401,000 for police vehicles and related equipment for their detectives and so forth. For roads and special projects, we're very proud to report, we've got $150,000 labeled for street reconstruction, and another $750,000 for resurfacing projects. So, this is like significantly more than we've been able to invest in past years. So, we were happy we could put the numbers together to make that happen, and Frank will be getting into more details. I finally recall his name, Frank Watanabe. But in addition to that, we do some sidewalk construction repairs, sign and road striping, and also, there's $400,000 that is a 50/50 match with grant monies to do improvements to the drainage, or actually, the, the, it wouldn't be seawall. What would be the proper term, Frank? The bulkhead or the...
Seawall.
Or seawall at the working waterfront. As far as stormwater, we continue to invest in some pretty high-priced equipment, $160,000 for a dump truck and some other equipment. Had a typo there, it's actually pipe slip lining, and $100,000 for road crossings and side yard pipes. So, this, this is like a notch up of what we typically have each year for those purposes. So, Parks and Recreation, we've got $275,000 of total park improvements. A big portion of that is directed towards Friendship Park, and part of the intent is to establish pickleball courts at that location. At the cemetery, we've got the need to start planning for additional columbariums, so we've got that programmed there again for next fiscal year. At our city garage, our fleet management division has $4,000 of shop equipment. At the golf course, as you are probably aware, we've done some major improvements this last year on the irrigation system at the golf course. Our next step is for next year to do a rebuilding of the greens out there. So, we continue to invest quite heavily in that, that asset. The airport, we are looking at a master plan design and work on the airport taxiways, C, D, and E. A large part of this will be funded through grant funds, and the balance will, is supported through a matching, matching funds provided by the discretionary sales tax. So, altogether, next year's investment in capital is $3,323,000, which is about roughly one-fifth of the total we've got over the next six years. So, we're taking, they are spread out over the six-year period, you know? We're not just looking at the current year and loading up all our needs in this year, but we are scheduling them there again, based on our financial capabilities. So, we use a variety of sources. Those of you who've heard my presentations before, we, we have the general fund, which is your general property tax money and taxes and fees that come into the city, plus we have some discretionary monies, the local option gas tax and discretionary sales tax, recreation impact fees, stormwater fees. Our golf and airport funds generate some, some revenues to support their operations. We have the cemetery trust fund. It's limited on how those funds can be used. They will be used towards these columbariums, by the way. And of course, we actively seek grants and have a loan scheduled essentially through inter-fund loaning from our building division, our building department. They've been doing quite well in recent years, so we're using some of their surplus to actually do an internal loan to pay for some of the golf course improvements. To summarize it, oh, there is 25% of our six-year plan, $15 million, is towards roads and equipment. So, we think that's a good piece of our infrastructure, then it will be basically renewed. We do spend about 13% towards the police department equipment and 13% towards stormwater capital improvements. The rest of it is spread between computer systems, Parks and Recreation, the working waterfront expenditures, and all other. Enterprise funds are about 39%, and that's mostly because of the improvements at the airport, because when you add the funding from grant monies, that sums to quite a significant portion of our expenditures. Once again, our, we get a variety of funding sources, and it's broken down for you on the charts. Like I said, I know you've got a, a lot of detailed information, probably more than most people could read or absorb in just an hour or so, so if you've got any questions or anything that, any concerns that you want to express, I'd be happy to try to address those.
Kind of one general question I have, I don't know what you're referring to when we talk about the, and I don't even know if I can pronounce it, the columbariums for the cemetery? What...
They're both basically the structures where you have the niches.
Oh, so it's, it's an above-ground? Above-ground?
Yes. They are structured above-ground, and there's several of them out there at this point, but we've had sales or usage of those that we have to the point that we feel like we need to start planning for additional sales, so...
Sorry to divert you. I'm showing my ignorance on that one. I'm sorry.
Okay. It was a new word to me, actually, as well, so...
One question that I have, and I see the, the purchase of computers, and I understand they're short-lived creatures, just because of technology. The thing that really has me concerned, we're hearing all the time about, you know, this organization or this part of the federal government's been hacked, and I see on page 123, you're going to use cloud technology, you know, as part of the servers, and I didn't see anything in there, but I'm sure that it's in there. When you have a new system, part of that is a new software to prevent hacking. Is that correct?
When you think about it, we've had a consultant in looking at our, our IT operations, our computer operations, and a key part of our computer services is to make sure that we're protected and backed up, and, and we've got a way to recover, so if we be hacked or the, the operating system be corrupted somehow. So, currently, we use a pattern of having servers at the airport, so that like our city hall servers, if they should fail, we have, we would have a local backup. What's been proposed to us is to use the cloud to actually store information there, and we had the same initial reaction. Well, you know, it's way out, it's out there and wants to stop people from accessing it, but then you think about it, and the corporations that operate those facilities have a much more likelihood of putting in the proper controls and, and having the, the knowledge or the ways to ensure that the system is protected. So, it's probably safer there than at a, in a local installation. So, that, that gave us some assurance that we would be moving in the right place to go towards that technology.
So, basically, we'd be eliminating local servers? Is that correct?
We're actually looking at it as a third line of defense.
Third? Okay. So, that's in addition to, that's why the dollar amount is here? Okay.
Yeah, and the investment in capital, I mean, when you start replacing a server, they could run from $4,000 to $10,000, depending on the, the size and capabilities of that server. With the cloud, you're talking about a rental fee, and we started looking at the cost of that rental. It's, it's like an insurance policy, and it, it seems to make sense from, at least my financial point of view.
Yes. I have other questions, but I'm, what I'm going to do is turn it open to the other commissioners.
And we do want Frank Watanabe to be able to give a little short spiel on the roadwork if you...
Okay.
Before, after...
Probably best if we did that right now, correct? Yes. That might answer a lot of the questions, or at least some.
Okay, you want your PowerPoint?
Yep.
That's mine. Where is yours? Where is yours?
Technical support is coming.
Are they? To the rescue. Thanks Gary.
See, it's nice we're not using the cloud for that support.
Fortunately, I only see. That's the PNC. That's mine. That's yours. Barbara says she's going to have it loaded. Now, this one's tied down so much. She didn't get it loaded. Let's see. That one, that's the only one for tonight. Check old files. Does he, he get his thing? February. That I don't know. She didn't tell me.
The audience, we're having a little technical glitch here with regard to getting a PowerPoint up and running.
Oh, you can just see it. Old technology. Old, old style.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't see it here. Sorry about that. Let's just do it that way.
Okay.
The old-style method?
Yep. Is that on?
We're all ears, Mr. Watanabe.
Give me a second to make sure that he gets his, the overhead turned on, then I'll get started. Again, I'm Frank Watanabe, the city engineer. And I'm going to go over mainly the street paving, but I'll talk about any other projects if you have any questions on the site, on the CIP. Let me, uh, how do you? I'll let him do it. I'll let Gary do it, just in case I screw it up. Is that it? Yeah. Is it on? Yeah. Well, I'm just going to, just kind of briefly go over the, the presentation I've given to the budget committee. Just again, Frank Watanabe, the city engineer. I'm showing you right now is the 2016 pavement map that we did probably back in March. Listed on, and you really can't see it, but we categorize our streets when we do a pavement assessment every year based on the conditions of the roadway, based on a visual observation. Typically, you do either a visual observation or you do a detailed boring test. We just try to do a visual observation. We ranked the street conditions, as you see here, from bad to good. A majority, if you look at this map, is pretty much in, in good shape. The green ones are the ones we did in the last five years. So I want to break that down in terms of a actual chart. And you can see from 2015 in comparison to 2016 where we sit in terms of pavement. So we are trying to do a catch-up work. We're about, and if you look at the bad and poor conditions, we're at about 7% of roads that need to be repaired and, and refurbished. And that's pretty good compared to most cities at, at our situations. You know, they're in the double digits, 20, 30% of the roads has to be resurfaced, reconstructed. So we're sitting pretty fair at 7%. And hopefully, as we keep moving forward with this catch-up, these numbers will drop in terms of the bad and good, I mean, the bad and poor conditions. I just want to highlight this issue for the city councils approving the milling and paving projects. We took care of Benedictine, we took care of parts of Concha, Melrose, and Bevan. And so those projects have been completed and they've been repaved. We're currently right now, just to highlight right now, we're currently working on Barber Street. And Barber Street is a reconstruction, different than the milling and resurfacing. Reconstruction is you're putting in a brand-new road. So right now, Barber Street is closed down from Salem, pretty much almost down to Bocell. And they're, what they're doing is tearing out the base material, and they're going to put back in the base with rock. And then they're going to pave the entire north half of Barber Street from Salem all the way down to 512. And that's happening right now as we speak. Looking into the future now, what we're looking at for this year's 2016, 2017 CIP roadwork, as Ken mentioned, we have about 150,000 set aside for Bocell. There's a good portion of Bocell that we need to repave, and that's actually the section between Barber and Roseland. That section of roadway will be torn out and put back in as a brand-new road. The remaining half of Bocell, as you showed, from Barber to Fleming, will be a milling and resurfacing. That portion of the road is not as bad. And from that point on, all these other streets is a catch-up work. Concha, we took, we took care of Concha this year. We're going to finish the rest of Concha. Bevan, we took care of parts of Bevan this year. We'll finish up the rest of Bevan. Schuman, same thing. We took the section from US-1 to the tracks. This will continue it on a little farther. And then there's sections within the city, minor streets here and there, that we have to take care of, totaling about $750,000 in milling and, and paving. In the following year, 2017, 2018, we're looking at day drive, again, milling and paving. De Mass has a small section right now that we can wait until 2017. Has to be reconstructed, but it's a small little segment, about 250 feet. The other street that needs to be looked at for milling and resurfacing is Rolling Hills. And then again, some more additional citywide milling and paving on, on minor streets here and there, totaling that year about 400,000. And then for the third year, we're looking at from 2018, 2019, we're finally going to be looking at Indian River Drive. We'll be taking care of that with the, with the milling and paving. And then the citywide paving, and from that point on, the 450, I think, we're going to be in the future, fourth year, 50 are probably going to be less than that, maybe 300 and 250, because I think we've caught up. Unless something dramatically bad happens in terms of, which I don't foresee based on my observations in the streets, I think we'll just be doing lots of millings and resurfacing at, at about $250,000 range and just continue that as any street program. You have to always put money into it to take care of the roadway system. So with that, again, for the budget year we have, those are the numbers, as Ken mentioned. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
The question of paving and reconstruction, what is the difference with that? Why we have two categories?
Pardon?
Yeah, paving category, and then you have reconstruction categories.
The difference again is, highlight again, when we talk about reconstruction, you're tearing out the entire road and putting it back in. So the cost is dramatically higher because you have to put all base material back in, usually eight inches of rock, cocino rock, and then about two inches of AC. Milling and resurfacing is we just, we just grind off the asphalt and we put back in at two inches of AC. You don't touch the base. Other issue also is dramatically different is the funding mechanism. Certain funding mechanism has to require a full reconstruction of a new road. Other ones is maintenance, which is like the milling and resurfacing. So there's funding requirements. That's why the numbers has to be set aside for certain types of road improvements.
Okay.
I have a question, Frank, over here. How much, just for the, the milling and resurfacing, how much do you figure per mile, per lane mile?
In terms of, what do you mean?
Just the milling and resurfacing. Have you figured out what just a lane mile would cost per se for, for the mill and resurface it? So if you had a two-lane road, it'd be two, two lane miles.
Right now, in this, and just to give you a heads up, citywide, we have about, I think, 315 miles of roadway total. That's all paved roads, two ways, two, two-directional. Of that, you're saying if you, if you have to figure, see, basically, when you do road resurfacing, it's based on tonnage, because everything's based on a plant ton. So it's based on how much tons of asphalt you use and how much tons of, of rock material you use. So it's basically all based on tonnage. And the current right now rate for tonnage is about $100 a ton. A standard tandem truck carries about 25 tons. So that's how we do the math to figure out what's the cost to do roadways, is based on tonnage of asphalt. And a hundred bucks right now is a good price. In a few months, sorry, a few years ago, it was about 120. It's dropping, it's dropped right now because fuel prices have dropped. However, if fuel prices go back up, asphalt goes up, and that'll really then increase and diminish our ability to pave roads. So right now, we're in a good position. If we could get these roads done when the cost is only a hundred bucks a ton, which is very cheap, we could do, they'd say, bang for the buck right now, get as much as we can at a lower price.
Thanks for bringing that up, because I, I was thinking about that when I was doing the numbers earlier. And the city is really taking advantage of a lower price on the asphalt to get some, a lot more miles done with it, so.
We're, we're actually, to answer your question, Chairman, you know, we, I like the roads we caught this year. Surprisingly enough, we weren't going to spend as much on some of these roads because we were going to do some, when we started opening up the roadways and seeing what the conditions of the roadway were, they weren't as bad. But, but the roads that we did under, under the Ranger contract, they said if we would have waited another year, they would have been reconstructed. The water would have gotten into the base and the base would have been damaged. So we caught these streets just in time. I'm hoping we catch these newer ones this year the same way. And if we do that, we're in a better shape than some of our other local cities who are looking at all reconstructing, spending millions of dollars just to do one road. And that's why they're in the 30% to 40%, you know, and they're spending millions of dollars.
The, the Barber Street Bridge, it was in last year's, a million dollars to replace that, and it's gone, is it not?
No, it's not. Just to highlight to you on the Barber Street Bridge, there's a couple of projects right now. I was, I was actually at a meeting today at the NPO. I'm trying to get some grant money. We're, there's two projects for the Barber Street. Right now, the Barber Street intersections at Concha and Joey Hibman is, you know, where, I hate to say this, but there's a site restriction, right? There's a site restriction. We'd like to improve that site restriction by installing a traffic signal at both those locations. The traffic signal will stay green on Barber Street, so it won't cause congestion. But when you have side street come in, the signals will activate, allow the side streets to clear safely, and then reopen back up on Barber Street. So that way, it won't stop the congestion on, on Barber Street. We're hoping to get, it's a, it's a way to hopefully get money. We're going to use Safe House of School money. Safe House of School has an infrastructure for sidewalks and improvements to help kids to go to school. That location has a school bus stop. That location's heavily used by the school, heavily used because we have a pedestrian crossing there with a bridge. And so I've, I've already gone to the NPO Bike Advisory Committee. They endorse it. I went there today to the Traffic Safety Committee, and they liked the idea. And I'm going to, and it's a process too. And eventually, in April, when the Safe House of School grant application, our deal, I'm going to submit our grant to FDOT and hopefully get the money for next year. Just to give you a highlight, last year's Safe House of School, no one applied. The money was turned back. So I'm hoping to get about $300,000 to take care of our traffic signal there. On the bridge, same thing. I'm not going to use local money. I'm going to use federal money. That, that roadway, I'm going to thank our previous city manager, when we had the, remember the, I've got, the money was available to do the quick, and, and project readiness money, the stimulus money? You know, they federalized Barber Street. They took care of it. FDOT took care because the road was ready to be designed. They were looking for, you know, quick turnaround projects, so they gave us money for Barber Street, a local street. The moment you federalize that local street, now it's a federal roadway. I'm going to go after federal dollars. And I'm going to get federal highway money to redo that bridge.
Okay, now, the street repaving was increased by about $350,000 from last year's budget for two, for this coming fiscal year and this, in this year's budget. But there was no increase in sidewalk repair or construction. There's a gigantic problem with sidewalks. I mean, the, the $40,000 in here for sidewalk reconstruction probably won't do Main Street. And Main Street is in dire repair. Fleming, all the way from 512 around Fleming to Main Street is in dire repair.
What we've done this year, we had actually a larger chunk, larger part of money set aside for Schuman. And instead of redoing the sidewalk, we actually did dispatch work and repairs. I, I think for right now, our goal is to try to do as we can on the sidewalk until we get the roadways in better shape. Because as, as much as I'm into multi modes of transportation, not just the roadways and sidewalks, but maybe transit use, the roadways are critical right now. Like I say, if we don't catch the wind right now with, with the cheap price of gas, cheap tons of asphalt, and if we miss, if the roads go from milling and resurfacing to reconstruction, we're, we're going to be spending millions and millions of dollars.
Okay, but we repaved Main Street, or Fleming, all the way up. And we did nothing with the sidewalk. In fact, it actually made it worse. Now, we're going to go back sometime in the future and reconstruct the sidewalk. What's that going to do?
Actually, that sidewalk, and the reason why, is the problem, there's, there's always been a gray difference. And when we raise, this is what happens when people say you have to raise the road sometimes. We raised that road slightly and widened it. And encroached into that area, what they call a clear zone. What that section of Fleming needs is, is it has to have a concrete sidewalk. That's all asphalt. The sections that are really, really bad in the southern part, as it gets closer to 512, if you look at, that's in asphalt. That's not even concrete.
Yeah, but it's, it's a city, city-maintained sidewalk.
It is, but I'm saying.
A heavily-used sidewalk.
It needs to be turned into a concrete sidewalk.
And we, yeah. And well, that's why I'm saying is that there's, there's been no increase in the funds to do sidewalk.
Because I think the focus right now is to try to get the roadways done first. Because that's the bigger cash that'll hit us if we don't take care of it.
And the people who walk on the sidewalk would think they're as important as the cars on the road, so.
But I mean, point taken. Yeah, it is point taken.
Now, one of, and I, I'm going to jump to stormwater. I know you're talking about the roads, but I think.
I can answer those questions too.
Couple of questions on that too. Okay, the quarter round is gone.
That's correct.
And that, so the $500,000 we had in this coming year and forward on quarter rounds gone. Last year, I asked the question about maintaining the already-down quarter round. What I was told was that that was within this $500,000 budget. Where is the money to maintain the existing quarter round? And it, I, I can drive through the city now and see it coming up all over the place, so where's the money to maintain that?
There is no money to maintain the quarter rounds. The direction is to maintain the ditches and swells as we continue on. The actual quarter round program and the maintenance of the quarter round, beyond, I think, just the cleaning. We do, I think, three times a year, we go out and we do a fast cleaning. They just, you know, they blow the grass off, they re-pin the quarter rounds.
If it starts to come up, it's the residents' problem?
Yep.
It's the residents' problem when it comes up?
The, the direction was to stop the quarter rounds.
And there, and since the quarter round was the city's attempt at swell management, stormwater management through swells, why, how come some of that $500,000 wasn't transferred to do ditch and swell management in this year's budget?
I, I think it's been moved around in many places, but it is.
It has been moved around a lot.
It's, it's, it is set aside to take care, I know there's money set aside to do ditch cleaning repairs. I know the money is set aside also to buy some of the equipment in, in stormwater areas too.
Well, but, I mean, I, I look at this, I look at this budget for 1617, or, yeah, 1617, and there isn't any money in there for ditch cleaning as well.
It, it's actually, some of that money went into their operating budgets. The, the Public Works Department has a stormwater division, and some of that money's in their operating budget.
Well, but, I mean.
It's not, it's not a capital item. It's an op, it's an operating budget. It's still drawn from the same funding source.
Ditch maintenance was $200,000 in last year's, in last year's budget. There was a $200,000 ditch maintenance fund, and, and of course, that was for last year. And I don't know if that was spent or not, but there's nothing in here for this coming year for ditch maintenance or for swell maintenance. So we're, we've actually backed away from trying to do something with swells.
This year was a special money source that we used. We always maintain the operating as, as the money source takes care of the stormwater cleaning and maintenance. It comes out of their operating budget, so you don't see it in the CIP. The money source is still taken out of the stormwater fee in the, that account, but it goes into the operating of Public Works. There's a, there's, there's a line on it for a couple hundred thousand dollars to maintain and clean, but it's in the operating budget.
Okay.
So it's still there.
I'm, I just, all right, all right. I'll, I'll give you the benefit. Okay, now, one more question. What is in, what is, what is, what is being covered in working waterfront phase three? What is phase three?
Just a little history. Again, the working waterfront phase one, of course, was, you know, the exhibit room and taking care of crabby bills. And that also included the working waterfront marina, which is now built, completed, so that was all part of phase one. Phase two is what we're going on right now, is what we're looking at is the actual restroom and finishing up the boardwalk area and paving that milling's area. So that, that's being designed right now, and hopefully, we'll be moving into construction next year. So that's the second part of the fine, fine grant source. The third phase is to finish up the rest of that area, which would be possibly maybe a touch pond to do the shoreline restoration, which may be a seawall, maybe a slope wall. And then that'll be the last piece to, to finish up the, the working waterfront.
Okay, and that, that, those items, if I was not mistaken, those items in all the original paperwork was all part of the partner's responsibility to do. It wasn't the city's responsibility to do that.
It, it was, as we've been doing this within that fine program, I'm not sure if, I don't, with the original grant.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the, the, the working waterfront was a joint venture, private-public venture. And part of the effort down there was to be done by the private part of that venture. And I'm just, I'm just wondering what part of that has been?
I, I, I'm not, again, I'm not really sure about the private partnership, yeah. I know those grant monies from the beginning, and then we're still trying to get grant monies through the fine program. But I'm not sure of any part, private partnerships. I know the original intent of the building was to have a private partnership with the owner and the lease and the facility, but the, the actual overall site improvements was always going to be funded and grant-funded. And hopefully, we get the grant funding to finish the rest of that project.
All right, that's, okay, all right. And then one more question. The $55,000 for the columbariums, is that the planning for that, or is that actually construction? That's actually construction?
Yeah, that's actually construction. What it is, if you go out there right now, these columbariums, they're kind of like bookcases and niches. There's one already there. There's one side, it's like a wing. There's one there, there's a circle, and then there's another wing that doesn't have nothing on it.
I, I think they planned this years ago. I just, I mean, I just didn't know whether it was just a planning thing going on or whether that was.
Yeah.
I, I guess my only concern is that it seems like that we've walked away from swell maintenance and swell management because we've, we decided that the quarter round is not a successful project, for whatever reason. And we've kind of walked away from it. Now, we've got a large number of homeowners in the city who have quarter round in their yards with no intent to maintain it by the city. And we've got no dollars that I can see in here to continue to try to clean up those swells. And I, I mean, that's, that, you, you just drive around during the rains. There's, there are swell problems. And there's also drainage ditch problems. And, and the hundred, whatever's in the continuing budget, I, I just look at the, at the landscape management on 512 that the city is responsible for doing that looks like a yard that's not been kept for three years. And that's in the, that's out of the operational budget. So how can we intend that the swells and the ditches are going to be maintained any better than that landscape? Is, is the, the point. And we've walked away from that in this capital approval budget.
Again, I just want to make sure, you know, the, the Public Works Department still are maintaining all the swells and ditches. It may not seem like there's always priorities, but there, there is, there's a program in place to take care of all the swells and ditches. If they weren't taking care of those swells and ditches, we will have drainage problems. We are working on those problems on a routine basis. They are doing their best they can to catch up. But it is in their program to maintain the swells and ditches, but they stopped the quarter rounds. You're right. Because it was, it was always the intent was. Because it was always the intent was that's quarter rounds. And I was here when this thing was started seven years with Mr. Minner. Because I was one of the engineers to help say, yeah, that's good. Because I went down to St. Lucie County and said, it does work, but the people have to maintain it. And that wasn't happening. And that's where we started seeing deficiency, where the point was, it's not going to work. And the system, when it gets, you know, silted in, grassed in, it's not working. So you might as well just go back to, going back to clean the swells and ditches.
And, yeah, it's not working, and there will be residents who'll be calling the city saying, why don't you come take this up because it's coming apart and it's messing my lawnmower up and.
Well, they're leaving up the homeowner, so the homeowner is maintaining the grass, maintaining the yard. So they had to maintain around the quarter round, so.
All right, thank you.
So it sounds like we can pull it up on our own if we wanted to?
I think the issue is if it's to the point where it's not being maintained, the city's not going to go back out there and maintain it. So if it's to the point where it's dilapidated, it's popping out, I don't see an issue where if it's becoming an issue, a safety issue, not to remove it.
I have a couple of questions. Most of them have been asked by Mr. Dodd. The piping for the side yards. I see you have $100,000 for road crossing and side yards. Is that to fill some of these swells, drainage swells?
No, actually, those are where we have existing pipes that are failing. We have a lot of street crossings where the pipes were corrugated metal pipes. And corrugated metal pipes has a life expectancy not too long. And so there are a lot of them are failing. We have a lot of street crossings that are failing. And then we have a lot of lateral lines that goes from the street to the ditch systems, to the back canal systems that run between homes. Those are falling apart and failing too. And those are huge costs to the point where just a road crossing may cost 50, but this lateral line may cost maybe $100,000. So that's why that money is there for, sort of to take care of some of these band-aided problems that they've been band-aiding, but they need to go in there and replace that pipe.
I've seen new crossings that have been done by the city that are already sagging, the asphalt sagging. I don't think it's a problem with your pipe. I think it's a problem with the work being done.
I agree.
All right. The other question is, you're doing a great job finding money for us. There's a lot of money out there for this Zika virus problem that we're having. Could we not apply for some of those grant monies to fill some of these swells and pipe them?
The problem with the Zika is, you know, they say that the water has to be small freshwater areas, like ponds and like planters.
Like our swells?
No.
They're ponding.
They can't, that type of water won't, Zika won't survive in it. The grassy swells, Zika won't survive in it. It's got to be these small pots of water that has freshwater in it, really like in planters or like in your little bird baths.
Well, we can tell them that we see it surviving, and we could try to get some money out of it.
I actually went to a seminar a few weeks ago and had state health officials, doctors that specialize in studying mosquitoes from universities and with mosquito control, different officials from different municipalities here in Indian River County. And they went through all the details about Zika. And we started talking about how we're going to prevent it. And then if someone, it's not here, it's in Brevard and it's in Martin, but it's not here yet. The thing with the mosquitoes, there are only two of them that carry it. And they're active during the day, and they prefer urban settings, not your yard, not a forest. Exactly what Mr. Watanabe was saying. They want to be near your house, like if you have a planter or a tire or something small. It's usually something small near your house that fills with water after rain. You want to make sure you dump it. That's where the Zika carrying mosquitoes live.
I've also been following it for months, and that's very true. The homeowners are first in the fight against this, you know, keeping your planters, you know, still watering your yard. But still, these swells are terrible. They're holding water. Maybe it's not the Zika virus mosquito in there, but there's mosquitoes in these swells. Luckily, we have a lot of bats in our neighborhood that are eating them up. But I'd like to see some more work done on these swells. They, the cut that has been done to some of these is making it impossible for the homeowners to mow it anymore. And it used to be a slope, gradual slope in some cases with some high grass growing, where we were able to get in there and mow it. But a lot of the ones that we've gone in there and cut a trench, they're not mowable anymore. Now, the fill from the property, the homeowners' fill is going into that trench, is being excavated again and used somewhere else, that fill. Little by little, we're taking fill off of the land of the homeowners that's draining into these swells. I'd like to see, you know, some design to maybe slope these swells so that that fill stays on these properties. Some of my comments in reference to that. Thank you.
I do have a question or two. Regarding the signs and road striping, I guess I'd like to talk to you about the quality of the paint that's being used. For instance, the new turn off Main Street, where Main Street, where you have to turn and then turn, excuse me, and then turn back.
Oh, by Fleming.
To continue on, the arrows are gone. That's only a year old. And most of the striping around the city is absolutely gone. But it occurred, and that's okay, because in my neighborhood, it's 20 years old, so I understand that. But it really kind of bothers me to see it in one year's time. If I didn't know what I was doing at that intersection, there's no clue.
I'll take care of the markings, just to answer your question. Typically, in the good old days, we had paint, it wasn't water-based. Most paints now are water-based. And that's the problem we have then. You know, it doesn't hold, it doesn't last. Most counties, most cities, they use thermo now, thermoplastic. It kind of looks like paint, but it isn't, it's thermoplastic. The problem with thermoplastic is it's a heating, you have to heat it up, you have to lay it down. You have to have a device. And it's, I don't, I come from an area that uses thermoplastics. And if you're not really trained, you could burn maintenance people because it's really high intense material you're going to pour down, and it's an epoxy. We may use some of that with the money we have. We're typically right now trying to use better paint, more, less water-based, but more paint. We've been painting, if you haven't seen, we just recently painted the Schuman parking lot. We recently just painted the Jackson Street down the middle. We're doing our best to, he goes out on the weekends because it's the only time he has to go out. We only got one guy. And he goes out and he's painting as much as he can, as best as we can. We do use also tape. We use, and it's better tape, not like the good old days when we put this white tape down, you start seeing it move around. With the cars, it's a lot better 3M tape that you can put down that's reflective. We've been using it as well. So we're trying to find, and these are all cheaper materials than what we had in the past. Again, trying to minimize the cost, but trying to hopefully take care of the problem and not be a maintenance issue because since we only have one guy, he can't keep coming back every year. On some of those pavement markings and arrows, we don't carry the stencil, so it has to be painted, you know, with the paint. I'll make sure he'll take care of that this week. But we are aware, there's a lot of stop bars that are faded out, a lot of parking areas that are faded out. And we're trying to get to those areas. But again, we're doing the best we can with just the one guy we have.
Okay. And my other question, again, has to do with the piping that goes across the road, the drainage piping that has sunk down. There's one place in particular on Dolphin Street between Roseland and Blossom. Man, that is getting really deep.
I think it's, but I'll have, I'll double check on that again.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll take care of the markings right there at the intersection of Fleming and Main.
I just think that's a safety issue.
It is. Because when you get there, if you don't, if the arrows weren't there, you wouldn't know which lane to be in.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, thank you.
When I first moved here, E.C. Street was being constructed. And it was a rainy season, really bad. And that contractor had a really hard time finishing that job. And the base was soaking wet. And I see this street falling apart already. It's not that old. Can we try to schedule these other projects when it's not the rainy season, the total reconstruction ones? Just a suggestion, that's a suggestion.
I was actually the engineer, E.C. Street. It was supposed to be a rock-based material like we're doing on Barber Street, Koki Na Rock with the AC, which is the old, good old way of doing it. They use the reclaim method, which we use for Fleming, which was better because we had a better spec. But that was during the early days of when they used this cement reclaim. They call it full debt reclamation, where they use, they recirculate the material. You put cement in it, you put it back in. And that's what your base, and that's what did for E.C. Street. And you can see there's mirror crackings all over the place. But that was the first, that technology and that type of, new type of reusing the material just started out. It's gotten better, it's been perfected. A good example is Fleming Street is a reclaimed roadway, it's in much better condition.
What are the, I know there's different types of asphalt, correct?
That's correct.
On your projects, are we using the higher grade asphalts? Or is the contractor allowed to come in and use?
We spec out, and this, and it doesn't really matter. In the real industry, we're such a small use of asphalt. There's different types of asphalt. The majority of asphalt is based on this type of material, and they call it super paved material, which is an FDOT grade material, which has a higher mix, higher grade of rock. It's basically rock and oil base mixed together to create your asphalt. And we spec out an asphalt type, an FDOT asphalt specification. And they usually, ours is usually we spec out SP 9.5, which is one of the higher grades. But typically, what happens is when we get out to bid, it's not our bid that's going out. You've got this huge I-95 that's going to be putting in miles of asphalt. So the plant's making nothing but asphalt, FDOT asphalt. And typically, that's what happens. The plant makes nothing but FDOT asphalt. So if you want a cheaper asphalt, if your truck gets there, you're going to get the FDOT asphalt. Because they're not going to shut the plant down to make the cheaper asphalt. They're just going to keep pumping away at that FDOT asphalt. So typically, what you get is the FDOT asphalt. So we get the good, yeah, we get the good price, we get the cheaper price, but it's all high grade. And like Fleming Street was, and the ones we just did for the repaving and all these streets, we did excellent asphalt, excellent asphalt.
So the city is getting a better grade of asphalt, really?
Because of how we spec it out, correct.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Questions over here, gentlemen? None? I just want to follow up on one as far as the paint. I know that Barber Street near US-1 was repainted, restriped about 14, 15 months ago. And it's really faded. And you've answered the question why that's happening. I'm just disappointed because I look at US-1 and maybe they have, the federal government has bigger dollars that they can put down an oil-based versus a water-based paint.
FDOT and the county uses thermoplastic. That's why it lasts long.
That's why, okay. Any other questions?
I have one more question. If you could, tell me what it is we're doing with Friendship Park?
Well.
For $250,000.
It's that pickleball, remember the pickleballs?
Uh huh.
And that's what they're going to promote, is they're finishing up a study and a master plan. But what I heard from the Parks and Rec, and I think Marissa and the city manager is working on, is to put in these pickleball courts right now. You know, we have the, kind of like the baseball field back there.
Right.
And that area back there, that includes, you have to put parking back there. So you have to do more than just put the pickleball courts in. You have to get access back there and parking.
Okay, thank you. I do want to say I'm really happy that finally, we're going to be doing a long-range plan for our parks. I think that's a positive step, and I'm really happy about that. Thanks.
It's a nice park. I have one last question, well, there may be others, but I have one on the automated weather observation system. What does that entail? Does the city need something like that? Is that for airport purposes?
It's for the airport, it is. What we have, we have one right now, and it's an older version, what they're trying to, and it's going to be FDOT aviation/FA funded. It's required to have for safety at the airport. It tells you, you know, the weather condition, and it also tells you other information as you're flying as a pilot. The problem we have with ours is ours is such an old version, you have to click the mic to go from one to the other to listen to the weather or to listen to the information on direction. And that's, it should be on two separate frequencies. And then the new system will also tell you when you have weather conditions, such as lightning. It'll tell you if there's lightning in the area, so it advises planes to stay clear because now you're in a storm convent and there's potential lightning. So that system will warn planes to stay away. So that's what they're trying to get.
That's good, that's necessary. Last question, the road that's being added, I believe it was called a west entrance to the airport. Is that already there?
No, that has always been on the study. And more and more, as I, if you, as a new airport manager, and then even Joe Griffin, who was the old airport manager, that was at one time looked at as a potential economic development for the west upper end of the airport, which is really where you have the dead runway, you have a lot of open space, potentially a good area to have maybe some light industrial or some aviation development. We don't see that coming today, maybe in the future. But because that's not in the near term, that's why I don't think that west road access is going to be a higher priority. It's still on the FAA list, but not as high because they're trying to take care of all these operational issues, like installing these taxiways and taking care of some of these other improvements than to take care of something that may not ever come out in the near future. But it's still on the books, but it's pushed out to like 2025.
Okay, I thought it was shown here in 1718.
It probably still is in art, but the majority of the money that's going to come is going to be from FAA and from the FAA Aviation.
Okay.
I've got one more.
Yes, sir.
And it's actually, Louise brought up that, wouldn't the Parks and Rec plan be an item on here? That's a capital item, is it not, developing that long-range plan?
Yeah, at the time we constructed the budget, or the document that we've been using to present to the council and the Budget Committee, that plan wasn't thrown out there. But it would be funded out of the Recreation Impact Fees. You can use REC Impact Fees especially to do your planning for capital improvements.
Yeah, I understand. But I mean, would it not be part of the capital improvement plan to recognize the existence of that and the potential dollars?
Yeah, we do that by an amendment. One, say, the other uncertainty was how much the cost would be. There was like no information as to whether we should be budgeting.
Okay.
10 grand, 50?
I'm just thinking from an exposure point of view. You've got it part of the capital improvement plan, now it has exposure. And it's listed, it's got dollars associated with it, and people have identified the fact that it's something that the city is and would like to do. Isn't that just an exposure thing to me?
I understand, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Watanabe for the presentation. I know we're at a point where we need to make a motion. Does the staff have anything to add at this point for consideration before we make a motion?
No, I think Mr. Watanabe and Mr. Kilgore covered it pretty well.
Excellent job. A lot of detail here. It took me a long time to go over it, and I learned a lot. And thanks for all your answers and explanations tonight. So from the commission, we're at a point where we need to either recommend the city council that we forward it with no changes, or we forward it with certain specified changes. What's the desire of the commission? Someone wish to make a motion?
I would move that the proposal for the capital improvement program be recommended to the city council with no changes.
There's a second. And who was the second? Okay, Mr. Carter. Okay. Motion on the floor, could we have roll call for the vote, please?
Mr. Kizelwosz?
Yes.
And Mr. Huguen?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Ms. Cottonburg?
Yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We'll forward it on to the council. Excellent job, gentlemen. We appreciate all your hard work. Next item on the agenda would be staff matters. Staff have any points for discussion?